I'd like to call the caucus order. First piece of legislation from the Planning Commission for first reading and ordinance amending and restating Chapter 521, Health, Safety, and Sanitation of the Planning and Zoning Code for the codified ordinances of the Village of Lordstown. Comments? Hearing none, the second one's from council as a whole for emergency passage, a resolution authorizing the Village of Lordstown to settle pending litigation captioned as State of Ohio, EXREL, the Gloria Baker Living Trust, ETAL, the Village of Lordstown's ETAL, and declaring an emergency. Comments?
Can we pass this evening?
Yes. Any other comments? Next one's from Finance Committee for emergency passage, an ordinance authorizing the clerk to make the necessary revisions to the revenue and appropriation budgets pursuant to the amended certificate dated July 20th, 2015, and declaring an emergency. Comments?
I'd just like to see that passed tonight here.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, hearing none, are there any questions on the minutes in front of you for disposal this evening? Hearing none, are there any questions on the bills? Okay, hearing none, anything to be discussed during caucus before we go on the regular meeting?
I'm doing a new business, I asked Mr. Radka if he'd bring up when the mayor had to go to court in Cincinnati, which everybody knows, and his expenses for meals were a little more than what our ordinance allows, and I think he should be reimbursed 100 percent. So Ron is going to make a motion under new business, it's under $100.
That's parking and everything.
Correct.
Okay, I have a couple things I'd like to bring up. I talked with a solicitor, and we've had some issues with, and it's been ongoing for years, and our CCX crossings at Salt Springs and Lins Road. And I've given Paul a call today because this is one thing which, you know, we've all been told it's out of our jurisdiction. One of these days, we may be put in a pretty tight spot because of an ambulance call or a fire call or something like that. I know Bill, you can see that from your house down there. Paul, if you'd like to, you know, just give us a quick synopsis of what we discussed?
Okay. The bottom line is that in 2010, we were asked the same question. In fact, March 8th of 2010, we were asked to write an opinion and give advice on the enforceability of Lordstown's blocked crossing ordinance. And that ordinance was attempted to be enforced because a train was stopped in the crossing, and I think we even cited some employees of the train, one of whom was Bob Hagan.
Yeah, I remember that.
Who was a state rep at the time. Anyway, we do not have jurisdiction. The Ohio revised code and applicable federal laws gives jurisdiction to the Federal Railroad Administration, and we just don't have jurisdiction there. Now, at the end of it, I'm just going to read the end of this memo, and each of you should have received a copy today, we sent a copy to Bill, and you can ask him. It says, "We did not find any regulatory avenues through which Lordstown may plead their case. However, our research did reveal several publications by federal agencies that address the specific concerns that Lordstown has about blocked crossings." And there's a 50, what, seven page, how many pages?
It was 63 pages.
63 pages on the email that we sent you off of the federal website. So I mean, if you really want to get into the nitty gritty of this thing, you could look at that. They all suggest that the local community talk with the railroad to try to resolve the situation. The Federal Railroad Administration published a fact sheet in 2008 entitled "Trains Blocking Highway Rail Grade Crossings" that provides suggestions for operational changes that the railroad may make to resolve the issue, as well as some mitigation strategies for chronic grade crossing blockages. In September of 2006, the Federal Rail Administration issued a report entitled "Impact of Blocked Crossings on Emergency Response Services," and our concern was that you couldn't get emergency response vehicles from one side of the village to the other if there was a train on the roadway where you would cross. It details several ways to handle Lordstown's problems. If you focus in on pages 15 to 23 of the attachment, it will address those questions. So our recommendation is that either the Safety Committee or the entire council have the mayor invite someone from CSX. And it may not be someone local, you may have to go to a regional person that has more authority. And then do your homework in advance, so we could all do the homework in advance. So I'd ask the police chief or the street superintendent to come up with a list, say in the last two years, how often this has occurred, what the nature of the blockage was, how long a duration it was, if you have those records. And then meet with this person and say, "This is a health and safety issue in our village." And we could also produce copies of that report, if they don't have it, they probably do, and just remind them of that. But short of that, if they are unresponsive, then I guess you could just try to embarrass them. Call a press conference the next time there's a train blocking a crossing, and have the police chief there and the fire chief, and say, you know, "These people on the other side of the tracks, if someone had a heart attack or something, we couldn't reach them." And you bring the cameras rolling, and you probably will get some response. The other thing is, it's an election season, and you could get some of these people who always show up at election, Republicans and Democrats, and show them the crossing. But we have no right of action as a village, nor does an individual citizen. This jurisdiction is preempted at the federal level.
Thank you. You know, I've had several phone calls over the past, and I know, you know, Chief Milhohn, we've had CSX in here before, of course, then after we had the last guy, didn't he get a transfer right after that? And I know Kelly's had an involvement with that, you know, we've been trying to address this, but it's getting to the point now that, you know, and Brent will even vouch for this, we've even had school bus drivers sit there, and they cannot be waved across that intersection if the lights are going, even if it's not blocked, unless it's either a policeman or someone from the railroad. And we've had guys get off the train, go to the far side of the train, do some personal business, and hop right back on the train, and you know, that just doesn't get it. And it's, I know I've had, we've had a lot of buses over the past, and Brent will verify this, and this is something where, you know, we don't have a lot of power to be able to do something, but we're going to have to try to get something addressed. You got any comments, Brent?
The only thing I'll say, Mayor, is in the past, as most of you know, we've had a large amount of dialogue with different representatives from the railroad. Their common answer seems to be, which, they're accurate in what they're saying, they have provided us a phone number, when I say us, I'm talking about the police department, they have provided us a phone number, an emergency number, if you will. If we do have an emergency and we need to break the train, we can get that done in the event of a fire, EMS, or police call. But I can promise you that by the time we make that call, we can, I can guarantee you, I can go around the village and get to the other side before they can break the train. Because it's not something you can do right away. There's a procedure that they have to follow with air brakes and different things, and I don't know all the details, but it's a, it's a, it's not something that's done automatically. They will break the train for us. They've asked us not to share that number with the public, and we haven't. We do have a number that you can call and register your complaints. I personally don't think it does much, but if it makes you feel better, you can do that. But we do have a phone number to call to get the train broke in an emergency, but it's time consuming.
You know, my biggest concern is we can have somebody there who's within 20 foot of having that crossing unblocked, and the guys will not get off that train, and they let it, you know, get off and let our people pass and move it, because they just don't care. And I think a lot of it's arrogance on some of the employees who figure, "Hey, I can do this." But you know, it's quite frustrating. So that's one thing I'd like to bring up during caucus. And then another thing is, I got a phone call from a resident today who's firefighter in another community full-time, and asked if we had any rules on drones. I don't know if anybody saw the news this past week, but there was a guy in California who saw a drone, and you know, they have cameras, and flying over his house when his daughter was sunbathing or something like that. He shot that sucker right out of the sky, you know? And, you know, this guy said, he's a firefighter in Jackson Township over near Akron Canton area, and he said, you know, for $2,000, just about anybody can get a drone with a camera, with a zoom lens, and they can fly that thing five or 6,000 feet away. I mean, you know, that's over a mile for a couple thousand bucks. And, you know, I don't know, I'm going to take a guess that probably 90%, of the people sitting here don't do anything wrong, but I know I don't want my privacy violated, and this could be a real issue. And he just asked us if we had any rules under it, and I told him that I was going to bring it up tonight at the meeting, just, I don't know, you know, just throwing it out there, but I don't know if there's any rules on drones or anything, or any legislation, but, you know, even if you don't do anything wrong, they say the average person, if they're driving down the street, in a normal day, they're probably on 28 cameras. I heard, read that statistic somewhere. And, you know, that's, as far as law enforcement or something like that, I'm sure it's a great tool to have, but to have drones flying over your house and everything, you know, I kind of have a problem with that. I don't know if anybody else wants to comment on it, either or, that?
The FAA is working on some, defining regulations from, I know that.
Kidder, Connecticut, put a gun, yes, on the drones. Far enough, definitely on the drone.
So you know, this, due to changing times, you know, we can't just sit back and wrestle on our laurels, we're going to have to be a little bit, stay on top of this, and if, you know, resident calls any one of us, I'm sure we're all going to, you know, at least bring it up for a discussion, so. Well, that's all I have. Anything else in the caucus before we go on the regular meeting? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to adjourn the caucus, welcome to Lordstown Village Council Meeting. If you please stand and join me for the Lord's Prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, and thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, and we will forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, power, and glory forever. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bill, if I get a roll call, please.
Mayor Hill.
Present.
Mr. Bond.
Here.
Mr. Mansell.
Present.
Mr. Radka.
Present.
Mrs. Jones.
Present.
Mr. Shealy.
Present.
Mr. Reader.
Present.
Lieutenant Frank, present.
Treasurer Paul Dutton.
Present.
Police Chief Brent Milhohn.
Present.
Fire Chief Travis Eastham.
Planning and zoning economic development, Kelly Borden.
Present.
Parks, Buildings, Grounds, Street Commissioner Del Grimm.
Present.
Recreation Marty Gibson.
Board of Public Affairs.
Present.
Jeremy Votto, donut for Krista Jones.
Present.
Okay, entertain a motion, excuse Marty Gibson, George Ebling, and Travis Eastham. Move. Moved by Radka, second.
Second.
Second by Shealy. Comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda.
Move.
Moved by Jones, second. Second, Shealy. Comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Entertain a motion for disposal of the minutes of the regular meeting held July 20th, 2015.
Move.
Moved by Mansell, second, Shealy. Comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
I abstained from them.
Okay. Uh, we still have a majority, so we're good.
Yes.
Okay, entertain a motion for payment of the bills. Moved by Shealy, second.
Second.
Second, Mansell. Comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Mayor's report, just got a couple things. We had a real good turnout, over 100 people for the public hearing for the Ohio Power Sighting Board for the LEG, LEC Energy Project. Everybody who got up and spoke was very positive. No negative comments at all. We had a lot of local people from neighboring communities which came up and spoke in support of this. And now the next meeting is August 11th, and that'll be a brief meeting down in Columbus. They told me it'll only be about 15, 20 minutes at the most. If everything goes according to plan, this thing should be pretty much wrapped up and ready to go by the 1st of October. They are aware that they need a site plan, and, you know, we're going to try to get as much of that as we can straightened around before they come forth, so that way we have all our information. But it's looking pretty good. I believe I brought up at the last meeting, Mr. Sidewitz had bought a couple hogs from the Trumbull County Fair, and I believe the date is either going to be August 28th or 29th. And Ross Foods will be preparing the hogs. I'm not sure exactly how much meat they have. It's either going to be a Friday or Saturday, and any of the proceeds for that will be one of the ladies firefighters auxiliary. A lot more in the newsletter, we're going to be wrapping that up sometime this week, so, well, something in the newsletter, but when I first got approached by Mr. Sidewitz, and he said, you know, because these are the fire chief's daughters who raised the hogs, and they said, you know, what, you know, an innkeeper or something, I said, "Well, let's see if we can keep it in Lordstown." And I talked to Mr. Ross down at Ross Foods, and he's participating in it, so we'll get you more information on that. Also, our contact we had for Conkle, I believe the painting's done, I'm not sure if the whole floor's done or not.
It should be finished tomorrow.
Okay. The building's looking real good. You still have a lot of options on that. Our contact with Eastern Gateway has been, his contract expired, they let him go, but I did have a phone call today, and I'm playing phone tag with another gentleman who took his job, and they're still looking forward to keeping this project going, as far as using that for a welding lab. More information on that whenever we, becomes available. That's it for the mayor's report. Is there a clerk's report?
No report.
Any questions for Bill? Solicitors' report?
No report.
Questions for Paul? Treasurers' report? No treasurer. Ward of trustees, the public affairs report?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions for John? Jeremy, do we have a village engineers' report this evening?
Yes, I believe everyone up here should have a copy. If not, ask a couple.
Okay. Any questions for Jeremy? Okay, special reports, Police Chief Milhohn.
Mr. Mayor, submit my monthly report for July. If you have any questions, I'll attempt to answer them. The only other thing I have, Sergeant Mercer will be holding another women's self-defense class on Saturday, August 22nd, from 9:00 a.m. to noon at the fire station. We've advertised on our Facebook page and also on a marquee out here. We don't believe, depending on how the village newsletter comes out, that it'll get out in time, but Denise has assured me that if she can get it to the printer in time, she will also advertise there as well. But if there's any women, 16 and older, for women, any women that want to sign up, they can either call the dispatch center or myself, we'll get you signed up.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Brent?
I don't have a question for Brent, but last month, when he sent out his reports, I emailed him and I said, "The information we get on the yearly report is redundant with the information we get on the monthly report, and maybe we could save him some time if he didn't have to do that monthly report and just give the yearly report that's broken out by month."
She did suggest that, and as you can see, I did it the old way that I did today. The reason I did that, and I'll do it however you want, but after she had sent me that email, it did make sense to me to just cut it down and send out the overtime report along with the yearly report. But I went ahead and did the monthly report simply because the font is bigger, it might be a little bit easier for some of us to see. But if you want to just do the yearly, all the same information's there, I guess I'm open for suggestions.
Any other comments or questions for Brent? Okay. Fire Chief Eastham is not here. Planning and zoning administrator and director of economic development, Kelly.
Yes, Mayor, I just want to remind everyone that there is a Board of Zoning Appeals meeting next Monday, August 10th, at 5:30, and at 6:30, there is a planning commission.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Kelly? Okay, Parks, Buildings, Streets Superintendent, Mr. Grimm.
No report this evening, Mayor.
Okay, any questions for Dale? Marty is not here this evening. Do you have any correspondence this evening, Bill?
No correspondence.
Okay, public remarks. If you'd like to make a public remark after I acknowledge you, please come to the microphone and give your name and address so we can get it recorded in the minutes correctly. Public remarks. Okay, council remarks.
Yes, Mayor, I got a couple of them here. I'd just like to see what the rest of council would think on, with our CT engineering for North Point, it seems like North Point has kind of stalled a little bit. They're still trying to get some things down there, but their contract with GM, the last I heard, they have not obtained yet, and we're spending a lot of money on CT. And speaking with the clerk, I would like to see CT submit all the bills that they have, and instead of us continuing to increase the amount that we allow for this project, pay what's there, and then when North Point shows us that they're going to continue to push forward with something coming in down there, and we need more engineering, then we can release more money to CT and continue on with this. But this is all reimbursable if North Point does what they've said. So I think we need to just kind of like hold off, get all the bills paid to CT that they're owed, and when we see money coming in from North Point reimbursing us, we continue on if they get a contract. The other thing I have is the water sales to the power plant. I guess there's been a lot of people with concerns about is Lordstown not going to be involved in this water sales? And this water sales to the power plant, I mean, I know the mayor, even at that sighting board hearing, was excited and stuff. Well, Warren has all the right to be excited because of the volume of water being sold, but Lordstown still, it's going to be handled the same way GM is, it's going to be handled the same way Metalco is. Any business that's on the Warren system, Lordstown still gets money for the water sales. We actually sell the water to the power plant, and, you know, Warren supplies it. So Warren's excited because of the volume of water, the same as Niles is, because Lordstown's going to, there's going to be a lot of water sales there, but Lordstown is involved in the Warren water going to that power plant. I just wanted to clarify that. And Brent, what's your opinion on the monthly reports? Do you feel that would be good for you to just have a yearly report? I mean, it's kind of like blew by, Karen brought it up, you made a comment. If we need to discuss it a little bit and get some comments, I don't have a problem if you think it's good. It's going to free you up time.
I can see the smaller font, I was just doing it for the benefit of others. It doesn't really matter, I mean, John.
Does anybody up here opposed to it going to a yearly?
I'm not opposed to it at all.
Yearly's fine? If it's, if it's better for you, I mean, she brought it up, and it was kind of like, you know.
Nobody commented.
We do that a lot up here, I mean.
I think one thing we need to clarify, it's yearly report, but we'll get one per month.
Correct.
And I think the audience think we're only going to get a report once a year.
The yearly report used to be done at the end of the year. And I believe, Mrs. Jones, you correct me, I believe she had requested that I do that on a monthly basis, so I started doing that, and I just never did away with the actual monthly report. So you get the monthly report separate, but that same information is transferred to the yearly report, and you just get it every month. So I can do it that way, and that's fine.
Well, whatever you like to do.
I like that one because it gives me a chance to look at what has happened in the past and where history is. So it shows the comparison month to month.
Sure, I'll start next month.
Do you want to add anything to what I said on the water? I think you covered it exactly, and thanks for covering that. I've had a number of questions ever since that hearing had transpired, and the article was in the newspaper that quoted the mayor, the Warren mayor, as saying, or representative from Warren, saying that they were going to be selling water to the, to the power plant. A number of residents were concerned, asking me, "What, what's going on?" And I said, "Well, we'll get it addressed," and thank you for addressing that. I didn't put out any figures or anything, but what the way this-
John, I'd like to comment a little bit.
Okay.
Actually, they're still looking at Meander also.
Yes.
And they're going to have actually probably both entities.
Right. So. That's what I said. Meander District's excited, Niles is excited, and Warren's excited, because the, I don't think, I don't know if people realize the volume of water, but just take that great big General Motors Corporation over there, and this is just going to dwarf it, the volume of water that this plant's going to use. General Motors gets approximately 700, 700 to 800,000 gallon a day, and this plant, on an extremely hot day like we've had, could be pushing 5.5 million gallons a day. So, and all the water sales which take place in the Village of Lordstown go through the Lordstown Village, no matter who we purchase it from. Now, we are kind of blessed, we are all, we're tied into the Warren system, we're tied into the Nile system, we're also tied into Newton Falls, but usually if anything, we'd be shoveling it that way rather than coming this way. But, you know, if you see everybody out west, and they're talking about their parks, they have no water, I mean, that's one thing this area does have, is a lot of water. Just to touch base real quick on one thing John brought up about North Point, I did get a call the other day, there is another company which was looking around in Mahoning County, and I don't know what it is about Mahoning County, but sometimes when they can't find the correct site or anything, they're kind of looking at our way. It's 60 jobs for the North Point facility, but I haven't got any of the specifics yet, because a lot of times when these leads come in, they don't tell you, they'll tell you like a ballpark figure as far as how many jobs, whether it's a new investment or going into existing structure or something like that, but a lot of times, until they actually come into town and look, I think we may have another prospect out there for the North Point. So if they do, that's probably when this project will start moving forward again. Yeah, I got one more comment on the water sales too, just, just to clarify something, because I know how things can start. Both Warren and Niles, this is not going to be anywhere near maxing out their capacity. Don't, don't worry about the fact, well, will the residents start not have enough water, they both, this is nowhere near their capacity. Because of all the businesses, the steel mills and everything that have shut down over the years, they're excited to get this back, and it's still a small part of the capacity that both of these water facilities have.
You're right. Any other council comments?
Yeah, I'd just like to add on what John said about North Point, I, I agree with him, I don't believe we should be funding CT anymore until we get more of a commitment from North Point.
Hopefully they'll be coming soon, but they... Any other council remarks? Hearing none, committee reports. Finance, Mr. Radka.
Just so we have one ordinance, we'd like to see passed emergency tonight.
Okay, any questions for Ron? Parks, Buildings, Grounds, general improvements, streets and sidewalks, Mrs. Jones.
I have no report to be made.
Okay, any questions for Karen? Public Safety and Welfare, Mr. Reader.
Yes, Mr. Mercer, just to let everybody know, I'll be making a motion under new business that we can advertise the old 1982 pumper for sale. That'll be all.
Okay, any questions for Don? Public Utilities, Mr. Bond.
I have no report to see, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, any questions for Bob? Transportation, Recreation, and Senior Services, Mr. Shealy.
We're having a meeting tomorrow night, 5:00. You want to go in?
Sure. Morning, welcome.
Okay, any questions for Howard? Okay, Bill, if I got the first piece of legislation?
From Planning Commission for first reading, an ordinance amending and restating Chapter 521, Health, Safety, and Sanitation of the Planning and Zoning Code for the codified ordinances of the Village of Lordstown.
Comments or motions on this piece of legislation?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, during our public hearing, we never asked Kelly if she'd had any response from the public regarding any correspondence or anything from the public, and I'd like to ask that publicly now, if she's received anything from the public on this. I have not received any letters or emails or telephone calls, nothing. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, any other comments? Hearing none, I declared this ordinance to have had its first reading. Next, please.
From councils as a whole for emergency passage, a resolution authorizing the village of Lordstown to settle pending litigation, captioned as State of Ohio, EX, REL, LaGloria, H. Baker Living Trust, ET, ALV, Village of Lordstown, ET, AL, and declaring an emergency.
Comments or motions on this piece of legislation?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Motion by Mansell. Suspend the rules. Second by Jones. Roll call.
Mr. Bond.
Yes.
Mr. Mansell.
Yes.
Mr. Reader.
Yes.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Radka.
Yes.
Mr. Shealy.
Yes.
Six I's, zero N's. Motion carried to suspend the rules. Their motion to adopt?
Move.
Moved by Shealy, second.
Second.
Second Mansell. Comments? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Radka.
Yes.
Mr. Shealy.
Yes.
Mr. Bond.
Yes.
Mr. Mansell.
Yes.
Mr. Reader.
Yes.
Six I's, zero N's. Motion carried to adopt Resolution 14, 2015. Next, please.
From Finance Committee for Emergency Passage, an ordinance authorizing the clerk to amend all necessary revisions to the revenue and preparation budgets pursuant to the amendment certificate dated July 20th, 2015, declaring an emergency.
Comments or motions on this piece of legislation?
Motion to suspend.
Motion to suspend by Jones, second.
Second.
Second by Mansell. Roll call, please.
Mr. Reader.
Yes.
Mr. Mansell.
Yes.
Mr. Bond.
Yes.
Mr. Shealy.
Yes.